Meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 10, 2012, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry? Mr. Edmonds? Mr. Haritic?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Randall? Vice Mayor Whitehurst?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler?
Thank you, Anna Clark. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of council. As we start your public work session this evening, we're going to start with our hot topics items, and I'd like to call first Ms. Sherri Neal, our Senior Legislative Analyst, to give you a little bit of a wrap-up of the General Assembly process. Of course, we know it's a year-round process, and as Ms. Neal works with that, we normally do take a minute or two right about the time legislation goes into effect, or right after the session, to talk about some of the impact. So with that, Ms. Neal, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Chandler, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, members of council, City Manager and staff. This evening, I'm going to briefly update council on the results of our 2012 state legislative package. I'll provide you some information on several new laws that will impact local governments. Also, I will brief you on some approved state budget items that impact local government. And lastly, I'll present some of the important dates for the development of our 2013 state and federal legislative packages. As you may recall, in our 2012 legislative package, we had these four items. The first two were charter amendments, one that required a formal statement of a balanced budget in the charter, and the second that required authorization for the City Council to appoint an auditor that reported solely to the council, and both of those items did pass. The next one was a bill that we asked to have these two sections of the charter amended that related to the issuance of business licenses and any permits for land disturbing activities if there were delinquent taxes on other city taxable obligations owed. That bill also passed. Lastly, we had this resolution request that was a citizen suggestion for a study to provide a grading system for felony nonviolent offenses to help ease their ability to get employment, and to therefore help to reduce recidivism. Unfortunately, as much as we pushed to try to get that passed, due to the economy and the state budget being what it is, very few studies were being passed, and this one unfortunately did not. Turning to a few of the new laws that are going to impact local governments, in the November election, there's going to be a constitutional amendment dealing with eminent domain. What they're doing is they're actually putting all your eminent domain stuff into the Constitution now. We kind of worked on this for about two, and I say the "we," I mean the liaisons, the Virginia Municipal League, Virginia First Cities, all of us, tried to push back on this as best we could, but being that it was election years, last year and this year, it was something that was going to go through. The one big item that we had a problem with, with the constitutional amendment as it was originally drafted, was the loose language that they had in there for the definitions of lost access and lost profits, and how to determine compensation. So one of the big concerns from local governments were, well, what are you calling "lost access"? If you have a parade and you shut down the street, businesses can't get in and out, is that considered to be something that can be compensated? If you have to fix the drain, or you have to fix the street, and you have to shut down part of the street and the homeowner can't have access, is that lost access? So what they did is they went back this year, and this House Bill 1035 was passed, which provides those definitions, and it specifically relates to taking of eminent domain for public uses. This particular bill will go into effect pending the passage of the referendum in As you well know, there's been some changes to the Virginia retirement system. One, this one in particular, you're very familiar with, with now the local government employees and school board employees now are supposed to pay the 5% employee share into the retirement fund. The way the legislation, the legislators set it up is that you had five years to phase this, and between July 1st of the year and 2016, you had to do it in 1% increments at least, and by July 1st, all of your employees in your Plan 1 would have to pay at least 1%, and that was to be offset by an increase of salary of that same percentage to try to offset that loss. Portsmouth did do this, we did it in a full 5% increment, and at a salary adjustment of 5.7 to offset, and that did already, that particular one went into effect as of this last case period. Another one that you may not be quite familiar with, is Senate Bill 498 and House Bill 1130. These are companion pieces, and what this bill does is it creates a hybrid retirement program that's going to be administered by the Virginia retirement system, and it's going to contain a defined contribution and a defined benefits plan as well. All new state employees, local employees, and judges who commenced employment after the 1st of January 2014 are going to be required to participate in the new hybrid plan. Exempted from this were your hazard duty employees who are already covered by enhanced retirement plans such as LEOs. Another adjustment that this bill makes is that as of January 1st, January 1st, I'm sorry, 2013, the existing defined benefit plan for Plan 2 members, vested and non-vested employees, and Plan 1 non-vested employees will include the lowering of the retirement benefit multiplier from 1.7 to 1.65. The average final compensation is going to be based on the last 60 months of employment instead of 36, and it's going to cap the cost of living adjustment at 3%. Employees in service on December 31st, 2013 are going to give, are going to be given the opportunity to make a one-time irrevocable election to participate in the new hybrid Another thing that this particular bill does is that persons with less than 20 years of service that take an early retirement will not receive a cost of living adjustment until one year after reaching the normal retirement age. It exempts those people who are within five years of eligibility as of July 1st, 2013. Finally, the governor made some amendments to this particular bill, and he, the amendments were approved by the General Assembly, that makes the sickness and disability coverage mandatory to local employees, with an opt-out provision to local localities that offer comparable disability coverage, and it also clarified that the 1.65% multiplier and the 60-month average salary apply to all Plan 2 and non-vested Plan 1 employees, and that was approved by the General Assembly. Last but last, there was another bill, House Bill 792, which deals with the compensation for local employees for deferred compensation rather, so this one impacts localities that choose to participate in the VRS deferred compensation plan, as well as localities that have their own deferred compensation plan. And this one permits localities that choose to allow employees to participate in a deferred compensation plan to require the new employees to join the plan on an opt-out basis. This next one is an interesting one, that kind of has two parts to it. We also had a lot of, we worked very hard on this one as well. What this bill does is that as of July 1st, when a state police officer or any law enforcement that works for the state writes a ticket for a summons or an offense against the Code of Virginia, you cannot also write the same offense against a local ordinance, so you can only get one or the other. And the monies that is collected for those offenses go straight into the literary fund. The second part of that is that your local law enforcement, when they write a bill, a ticket for a summons, and they're convicted on a local ordinance charge, those funds also are going to be sent to the literary fund, and they're going to be held.
So back up, say the last part again? Say, back up again, the last part about one-
Local law enforcement issues a summons or arrests if somebody's convicted-
On a local-
On a local ordinance, because you can't do it anymore for local and state on the same ticket. If it's local, they do local, the state does state. If the local does something on the state, the money goes straight to the state. If it does on the local, it still goes to the state. But, but, the caveat is, the caveat is, as the bill originally went out, what they're going to do is that they're going to look at total collections between the state and the local governments, and initially, anything that was 30% over what the total amount was, then a portion of that was going into the literary fund, and then they're sending the rest of the money back to the locality. That would have impacted Portsmouth, who I think we were looking at a $250,000 stream of money or something that was coming out of these fees. We worked very hard on that to get that changed, so what happened, as it was going through the special session one, they pushed the mark of the 40%, which took us out of that, because we were coming in at the 30% mark, and now, when they finally passed it, it was at the 50% mark. So we're pretty much clear as long as we don't go over that 50% mark. The thing is that they will hold the fees until they determine where we are, and then they'll send them back down to us. That's filtering.
All right, I'm gonna hold my comments, so they're not worried for television. Okay, go ahead.
All right, turning to a couple of the budget items. On the 599 Public Safety Funding, we fought pretty hard to make sure that we didn't receive any further cuts there. We were fortunate, I guess you could say, in making sure that we were level funded for the biennium. As you can see by the numbers listed here, we did take a cut between 11 and 12 of about $210,000. 13 and 14, at this time, were level funded. The problem with this particular fund is that according to the way the Code of Virginia is written, as the general fund increases, by whatever percentage that increases, this fund is supposed to increase as well. They never really do it, so it does, it's really not following what code is, but it is what it is. Finally, down the line in duty acts, there were some changes made there for the Benefits Administration, which added language to require that as of the 1st of this month, any locality that doesn't participate in VRS fund will pay their, directly into the Line of Duty Act. It also added language stating that non-participating localities would not be responsible for paying VRS administration fees, and it also stated, put in a statement, continuing current process for eligibility determination, including the payments to the state controller for payment of fees to determine eligibility. In the area of K-12 education funding, we were pretty successful in that area, pressing to have more money added over the introduced budget. The final outcome is that it added 112.1 million in additional direct aid in FY13, and 100.5 million in FY14 over the introduced budget. So the total state funding for general and non-general fund was actually increased by 195.2 million in '13, and 243 million for '14 over the adopted budget. The next budget, quickly, just kind of points to what, after the special session, and that would have been the House Bill 1300, which is the caboose bill, what Portsmouth got out of that particular budget for education. So based on a composite index at that time of .2497 in '11, it shows you the state share was about 87 million, the local share was 22 million, and 12, the state share was 87 million, and the local share was 23. And projected for '13 and '14, as you will note, our composite index has increased for various reasons, including the real estate tax increases, so we're up to .2755. And the projected state share is going to be 89 million for '13, and 90 million for '14, and then you see your local shares. But of course, we all know that the local share is always greater than what actually the General Assembly says it should be your share for your education. State aid to localities, the flexible cuts, you probably remember that when the economy began to tank, the state decided to pull money back from local governments again, in another way. So they came up with this state aid to localities flexible cuts, and originally, it was like 50 million that had to be paid back, and it was, you had a base that they computed how much your share would be. So in '11 and '12, you see what our payments were, our base was 21 million in '11, we paid 1.161 million, and 12, our base was down to 20 million, and we paid 1.155. We pushed on trying to get this taken out completely, we weren't really successful, but we were able to convince the governor, and the General Assembly agreed, so they have decreased it to 50 million for '13, and 45 million for '14. So depending on what our base is, that's how much we'll give back, and those numbers should be available according to Virginia Department of Budget sometime latter part of this month. On the compensation board front, they provided another 6 million in FY14, and the amount's going to be equally divided between the financial assistance for local law enforcement, and the financial assistance to local court services. For the registrar, they eliminated the funding for printing and mailing absentee and voter registration applications, that saved the state about $77,000 each year. Instead, the state is going to make electronic copies of the applications for localities to print as needed, so that means that the cost for printing is on the locality. That's right, they absorb none of the cost. That's what they're setting it back on us. Yeah.
They're looking out for us, aren't they?
Yeah, they really are. The, for the constitutional officers, they capped the state reimbursement for retirement at 2.13%, which is the level for the state employment retirement contribution rate in FY11. And finally, it shifted to local governments, the entire cost of the Virginia Risk Management Liability Insurity Bond premiums on behalf of constitutional officers, directors of finance, and regional jails. And FY12, that was about 1.7 million to the state. The compensation board currently pays the premium and recovers 50% from reimbursement from local government, so now we get to pay the whole thing.
Straight up, yeah.
They're doing, that's good. Lastly, I wanted to point out, this on economic development front, this particular piece of legislation was very interesting, it had a couple of lives to it. It first came out as a bill-
It just-
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. It first came out as a bill, and we were successful in having the bill killed, and then it came back at, in a budget amendment, which the General Assembly, most, a lot of the legislators didn't like, because you're trying to legislate through the Appropriations Act, but it passed anyway. So this is the Port of Virginia Economic and Infrastructure Development Grant, and it's going to, it authorizes a grant program for economic development zones comprising 15 cities and 21 counties, which includes Portsmouth, and it pretty runs up, pretty much runs up to 460 corridor. And it's going on, based on the number of jobs, new jobs that's created, qualified companies can receive one-time grants of $3,000 per new permanent full-time position. The maximum amount of the grant allowable to qualified company in any given fiscal year is going to be capped at half a million dollars, and the maximum amount of grants allowable in any given fiscal year is $5 million. And the grants are not subject to proration, if there's insufficient amount of money in one year to pay the full amount of the grant, then that will be paid when that money is Moving forward to our 2013 legislative packages. We have begun to solicit items for our legislative packages, state and federal, and for, which is not in your, go ahead, in your printout, but for demonstration purposes, I wanted to show you, this year, we're doing a little bit of new twists. Not only are we using the city's legislative page for legislative submissions for citizens, but also for the city departments, for our city boards and commissions as well. So this has started on the 1st of July, we're sawing the city's electronic bulletin board that we're doing this at the moment. I will be getting with each individual council member, as I did before, for your suggestions, for any submissions that we'll have, go back. And this is going to run through the 31st of the month. On the 18th of this month, the General Assembly is going to begin pre-filing this year. Last year was around December, so for the elections, this year is in July. Looking at trying to presenting a draft of our package to the council on the 10th, the community meeting is on the 17th, where the citizens get a chance to speak to the draft, or any suggestions they may have at that time. Looking, we're looking at October 1st, somewhere around that date for our council delegation meeting. The 23rd of October to actually have council adopt our legislative package, of course, the 6th of November is Election Day, December 1st is the last day to pre-file for the General Assembly, and January 9th will be the first day of the 2013 session. Let's see it.
Full of good news, huh?
I try. I've got a buffer, it's best I can-
What does VML take on this? They've got to be disturbed with both sides.
As far as which?
A lot of the stuff that's been passed down to the locality-
Of course, of course, you know, and-
What kind of pushback are we getting from VML?
VML continues to push for local governments as best we can. You know, it's a difficult, it's a difficult time, it's a difficult legislature, the composition of it. You have more rural legislators up there than urban legislators, and so they don't really feel the problems that we're having. A lot of them will tell you that if you have so many problems, you can shift your problems to us, we'll gladly take them. You know, it's, so to answer your question in short, VML is really pushing as hard as we can, and that's why we were able to realize some of the successes that we have realized in this last session, and didn't lose any more ground than we've lost because of VML, First Cities, you know, and our actions working with them. It's hard.
Let's move.
Did our regional or local delegation, did they wage the good fight in opposing these things?
Of course.
Okay.
Yes.
Can we say that the region did as well? And the reason why I say that, obviously, a region's got more clout than a city, and unless we start acting like Northern Virginia as a region, we're gonna, we're not gonna have many victories.
I agree. I would say on some points, yes, the region did act as a whole, depending on what the issue was. I wouldn't say that we had a slate that, you know, was agreed upon, and they all pushed on that particular slate, no.
So there's really no collaboration-
I wouldn't say there's none, I say it depends on the issue.
As far as a slate?
There's not a slate this time.
Yes, couple, couple things that you can consider, and I think you mentioned a good point, Councilman Moody, in talking about Northern Virginia. One of the things that Northern Virginia is part of is a COG, the Council of Governments, and you have, you have various COGs throughout the nation, and that does provide your regional arm of government, where there would be a legislative package that comes from that COG. The Northern Virginia COG is actually part of a little bit of Maryland, DC, and Northern Virginia. So when you talk about putting a legislative package there, you've got a pretty strong arm. When you get to Hampton Roads, you've got your individual delegation packages like here, then you'll have something that might be, the Hampton Roads PDC or TPO will be another arm of legislation, not necessarily tied to every legislative package, but kind of your regional arm. Hampton Roads Partnership, you've got a number of different entities that may have some legislative initiatives, but you may not have the strongest central focus and lobby that you're talking about, that you would have with a COG.
You know, it makes me wonder, when, if ever, are we going to wise up as a region? And keep getting the short end of the stick? You know, I say that rhetorically, but I see, I see no effort towards that, that direction.
Vice Mayor?
If it impacts the Virginia Beach, we become a region. Doesn't impact Virginia Beach, we don't become a, that's the truth. Trying to move a carrier someplace, we go crazy and become a region. Things that impact Port, impact Portsmouth, you know, out of ourselves. This is a good thing for the legislative package, but there are other items like that didn't, that didn't go through the legislative package, like the charter amendment. We need to have everything that comes out of Richmond that impacts the city on something like this, so we can, we won't have another issue we had with the charter. We'd be briefed on it to know exactly what came out of Richmond, what impacts Portsmouth. In addition to this, we need to have something else like this, talk about all those issues.
Okay.
Thank you very much, good job, Trey.
Okay, council members, for the next item, I'm going to have Mr. Holt come up, and I'm also going to have him join up with Mr. James Wright. Mr. Wright is a familiar face, and we did announce the latter part of last week, that Mr. Wright is now interim city engineer, so certain duties and responsibilities for the City Department of Engineering will be handled by Mr. Wright. Mr. Wright has been with the organization about 15 years.
My cousin.
Okay. Didn't know that, Mr. Wright.
Did not.
No. Neither, is it?
Welcome, how y'all doing?
Yeah, so, in, in, in all essence, he's been in a number of departments, Public Works, Public Utilities, all with the city, and he's heading up the Engineering Division for us now. What the gentlemen are going to talk about, a couple of questions that had been raised last council meeting. One was about the paving schedule, and I'm going to yield to Mr. Wright first to use last year's paving cycle to kind of give you a better example in terms of how that process works, I think Councilman Moody had asked about that. And also, there was a question about the Newport CDA, just a little information in terms of how that works, where it is today, and the gentleman will work in concert with that. All right, Mr. Wright, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Member of the City Council, City Manager, City Staff. Current paving schedule is administered and funded through the Public Works Department. The Engineering Department provides technical support throughout the entire process. The way a street makes it onto the paving list is, it can be a paving request from a citizen, another department, or any individual actually traveling through the city can, can bring that to your attention. Staff investigates, investigates the street, and then makes a determination if that street can make it on to the paving list. Once it's on, once that determination is made, we investigate and take a look and see what type of funding source we have available, and then we narrow that paving list down. We also coordinate that effort with any other projects that may be going on throughout the city. So a street, and say a corridor that has an upcoming project, like Turnpike Road, or any of the downtown area, those streets would be eliminated from the paving list because there's future work that's going to impact that street, so there'd be no need to pave that street. Funding recently has been limited, so we focused on some of the high travel corridors. Recently, in the last paving list, King Street, Elmhurst, and some, some of the other streets where you have a lot of traffic, so you can get the most bang for the buck. So that's basically in a nutshell how the paving list works currently.
Let me ask you, Mr. Wright, what is the criteria? Once a citizen or someone bring a street up to your attention, what's your criteria? You go out, there's only one hole, that ain't enough, three potholes, eh, maybe?
Say, King Street, for a prime example, you're gonna, you're gonna ride out, and you're gonna take a look at the street. Is it, is it cracked? How many potholes are on it? The holes that you see, are these potholes related to utility issues? Are they related to defects in the sewer? Are they related to defects in the storm drain? If that's the case, it may not be that the street needs to be paved, it may need to be that the utilities on the street need to be repaired, and it becomes a different kind of project, not just a paving project. So a lot of factors come into play when you're looking at the street.
And we just come out of this, last year's cycle, I think we just completed our paving schedule. How many streets roughly did we do, and how much did we spend? Do you know?
I'll have to get back to you on that. I can, I can definitely look into that, provide that information.
Okay. Let's move.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
You mentioned funding is tight, which reminded me of our urban allocation money that we've been taking a hit on for a number of years. It's been deducted from our, I guess, money that we can be using locally to help pay for 164 as a toll road. And I think legislation passed to, to stop that, not reimburse, but to stop it going forward, and it was going to another committee that was supposed to approve that. I guess my question is, what's the status of that? And when, when can we expect to see that money reinstated?
And you're thinking about the urban allocation fund for the city, right?
Correct.
Okay, a couple things I'll mention, is Ms. Neal still here? Okay. She don't play. She don't play. Couple things, I think the last couple of years of the General Assembly, nobody has gotten any money for urban allocation funding, so that's one, so no new allocations have been made. For Portsmouth, remember, we were actually giving up what we would get-
Correct.
-to a certain debt.
Correct.
So, what they've really done in that measure is said, "We don't have to give up anymore." So, there's nothing that would be restored for us. It's just when they would come back to start doing new allocations to everyone, we would be entitled to get something. Where our previous allocation was going into that hole to fill that amount of money that we had said that actually made the project pencil.
If there was anything to give. Actually, men, in three years with no allocation.
But nobody...
Right, nobody has. That's right, that's right.
But, but once that, my question is, once that is restored, we were reduced amount prior to it being, I guess, withdrawn from all localities. And I know there was legislation that was approved by the General Assembly. We just got a briefing on it, I wanna say, you know, four or five months ago.
Reduced?
That, and it had to go to another committee. And if they approved it, you know, we would be whole again when it was restored.
All right, and I think, and we may just be talking about a slight difference of words, but there, there wasn't to be a provision where the city would be reimbursed for monies...
I'm not talking about reimbursement.
Okay. Or, or any provision to get back what had already been paid.
No, it was going forward.
Yeah, and, and then, then you're right. Going forward, if there should be a new allocation to everyone, whatever Portsmouth would be entitled to would have no deductions. You would get what you were supposed to get going forward. Yes.
But, my question is, did they get final approval? There was an approval process involved.
Okay.
And maybe that's a cherry, cherry new question?
We can check and ask that question, yeah.
Okay.
And if we ever get that money, Mr. Wright, we'll give it to you so you can put another schedule together. So, thank you very much.
All right.
Position and money, you're doing two...
That's right.
Stop and keep going there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Good evening. Just a real quick update for you. Richard Hartman was before you a couple of months ago to give you an update on the Newport Community Development Authority and the drainage improvements that were scheduled to be installed. They are adjacent to the Highland-Biltmore subdivision. Just a real quick update, we received an update from the Sandlers yesterday. The Community Development Authority, which is a separate legal entity from Sandlers, have hired the Sandlers to serve as general contractor to complete that job. When Mr. Hartman was here previously, they were in the process of wrapping up the engineering drawings and were gonna begin to notify, the process of notifying the adjoining property owners of any remaining encroachments that remained in terms of really fences and those things that were over the property line that really were gonna be right on top of where the new drainage ditch and where those areas were gonna be improved. And so, the, the update that the Sandlers have shared with us was that they are ready to go, and they have a contractor on board. Says they're ready to begin as soon as possible, and they'll be given notice to proceed, and they're saying conservatively, the work will be completed in 60 days. Weather notwithstanding, they're gonna work right through until it's done. And again, conservatively, work is in 60 days, and I think that's gonna be dependent on if there are any remaining encroachments that need to be resolved. If there are homeowners who have not yet removed their fence or brought their fence back onto their property line, that may take a little bit longer, but the work is not expected to take any longer than 60 days at all, and they're ready to begin work, and there is funding allocated. The job in total is gonna, is budgeted about $213,000. And that will include those drainage improvements and wrapping up some of the curbing to direct that drainage along that back property line. So, we hope to be back to you in the next 60 days at the most with hopefully a substantially complete update.
As far as encroachments, do you have any idea how many or how much do we still have as far as interferences to deal with? Or have most of that stuff been cleared out?
I couldn't tell you, I didn't walk the property line today. I can't tell you how many were remaining. There were every bit of six to eight at the beginning of the project of where the fences need to be, needed to be relocated back onto the private property owner's side of the property line. There were at least six to eight at the beginning of the process.
Vice Mayor?
I have a small island, island safety town. Trying to put that pavilion or shelter. We were supposed to get some help from the attorney, from the engineer about determining whether or not the building is sufficient, strong enough to withstand wind or whatever. The building is now starting to deteriorate because wind is taking the top half of it. When can we get some help?
Mr. Portsmouth, are you talking about the building itself? The shelter that was being constructed?
Shelter's being constructed.
Okay.
Oh, I, I was gonna say, are you talking about the, the sign off by the engineer that should precede the building permit itself?
Yes.
Okay.
Let us go back and take a look at that, 'cause there was a lot of email traffic, even some private assistance that had been proffered. I don't know if that had actually been dealt with.
It didn't happen. All we need is somebody to go in and say, "The building, as it is currently constructed, meets the code" or exceeds the code.
I understand. That, that probably would be our contract structural engineer. Let, let us check on that.
The other thing is, where, where are we on the behavioral health building?
Okay. Council had given direction on that, that we were gonna pull out the PPEA process. So, we had that consensus, worked on the specifications that would issue a city bid for that building to actually bid on the street for design specifications.
When is it likely to happen?
Probably in the next 60 days, I would say, right up the cuff, unless I can check on it and give you a better answer.
The other thing is, at the last council meeting, we had one of the persons from the Development for Craddock.
Sir?
Where are we on that?
About to touch on that, it's the last...
We done with these guys, I think. You hit all around, y'all, on what you presented, but thank you very much, appreciate it. Yes, sir, we're good, let's move on, yeah.
All right.
Congratulations, Mr. Wright.
I'll have Mr. Holt stay. Mr. Wright, thank you. And I'll have Ms. Kathy Warren join us from PRHA. As the Vice Mayor has mentioned, and the Mayor's in the other two as well, you did have a non-agenda speaker who presented a correspondence to you and had mentioned that it was something that had been sent, at least to the manager's office. I'll go ahead and have between Mr. Holt and Ms. Warren chat with you a little bit. We wanna try to cover what was in that correspondence, for which I will mention publicly, we officially received on Thursday. So, it was presented to you as we had received it on Tuesday, but it officially came in Thursday of that week. So, there are a couple of other things that we just kinda wanna make sure that you're up to speed on relative to the project. So, who will I yield to first? Mr. Holt, Ms. Warren?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council. I think the last update that was provided to you was about two weeks ago at our session at Bydaway. And since then, we've had some major milestones that we're very happy about, and that just happened in the last week. One of the biggest items with a development project, especially as, as large as this, is to submit the site plan and get that review process started. Because typically, that's a 90 to 120 day review process. That came in last Thursday for Phase One and Two of the project. And this week, we had the site plan come in for the rec center. So, those are two large pieces that now get that clock ticking, and all of the other pieces that are, have to happen on a parallel track are starting to occur. So, we're happy to report that it's moving in a really good direction. We start our monthly meetings now with the developer tomorrow. So, PRHA staff, city staff, and developer staff will sit down tomorrow. We'll meet at least once a month and make sure it's on track going forward.
So, really, some of, most of the preliminary tasks that had to have been completed prior to them submitting the plans for review had been done successfully. And some of those including, include administering the rodent traps and getting that process done in the, in the building. That was completed back on April 19th. Certainly, removing the tank, that has been done. We're waiting on a certification letter, at least a letter of acknowledgement from DEQ. That's not a letter that the city provides. We have to wait on DEQ from the state. And then, they're rather noncommittal about when they'll get us a letter, but that closeout process has been completed. There was not any contamination detected, which is a really, really good sign, both, both from a development and from a cost point of view. We need to do, we do need to go back and redo some of the compaction the developer had requested, that where the big hole was left in the ground, that we compact that earth back to almost a structural grade as if there was no ever, no hole there to support development on top of that. That should be done by the end of this month. But as Ms. Warren mentioned, the bulk of the work to complete this project and to move forward can now begin on the parallel track with the plan review. All of the issues around needing to terminate the utility services to the site and wrap up those things and post the funds to the escrow, all of those will happen in terms of closing out the utilities. Once the existing rec center is closed, that's gonna happen 90 days prior to demolition. And certainly, all of the other items in terms of the deliverables and conveying the deed and the marketable and insurance title and the money in escrow will happen concurrent at the date of closing. And so, again, all, now that the plan review process has started, now that both of those plans are in, everything can continue to move forward.
What the hell, what held up the site plans and that information getting to you?
Well, I think that it, and again, this is a very large project. We're talking about four different phases of housing. And the development team has to pull together all of the specifics in order to even get it in and work with that engineer to get it into planning. It, it takes a lot to put a site plan together. So, it's not something that happens overnight.
I understand. But the site plan is the responsibility of the developer?
Yes.
The city staff or PRHA staff is working to develop a site plan?
Well, I'm glad you said that, 'cause that leads up. My next concern is the developer or a representative that he's sent up made some very strong accusations, it was very disturbing, making it seem like there was absolutely nothing they could do because everything was waiting on you or you to get something done. And it appears that that was not a true statement.
Well, the preliminary approval for the subdivision was granted by the Planning Commission last September, on September 6, 2011.
Last September?
Correct. And as Ms. Warren, the next step in the process, once the developer lets his engineer loose to prepare the detailed construction plans, and those are the really thick plans that talk about how the road will be built, the water and sewer, all that takes time. Once he gets comfortable enough in the due diligence process after the preliminary approval to cut his engineer loose, it takes a good bit of time for the developer's engineer to prepare those plans. And we've received those, as Ms. Warren mentioned, last Thursday.
So, I mean, again, back to the, the point that was made last month. He made a bold statement about work and progress could, might be done on their part. Everything was the city or the housing authority.
Well, if I can just address that specifically in the letter, there are two paragraphs that say there are two items that needed to be done before they could go forward with other items. One was specifically to do with the Phase One environmental assessment. Phase One, my understanding is basically complete, and what they're waiting on is for the Phase Two, not the Phase Two, the DEQ closure letter to be provided to that environmental consultant so that they don't recommend that a Phase Two has to be done. And that's pretty straightforward. That's about to happen as long as DEQ acknowledges the closure report. So, that was one, but that does not preclude you from submitting a site plan or going forward with other major milestones, as I mentioned. Encroachments and the easements. The encroachment letters went out this week to some of the neighbors who have their fences on the property. So, that's a process now that should be complete, I would say, within the next couple of months, well ahead of closing. There are two Dominion Power easements. One, we can get rid of because it's no longer live. We cannot get rid of, Dominion Power cannot release that easement because it feeds the rec center. So, until the power is gone in that easement, that cannot go away. So, there's a lot of issues, but I don't see anything, to my knowledge, that the city or the authority has done to preclude the developer from moving forward on their track.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I was gonna say, and there was a, there was a last minute addition, sort of an amenity that the developer wanted to add, that he hadn't contemplated back during the rezoning and when we had adopted the master plan back at the Planning Commission and City Council stage. Like I say, he came up with it with a, sort of not a have to have, but a nice to have. He, he really wanted to make that front linear park in the entrance to a subdivision kind of pop. So, he, at the beginning of the summer, he floated some ideas about adding in a water fountain feature and wanted to know in the context of, you know, if that was something we could approve as part of the linear park. And the conversations we had at the beginning of the summer were really, sure, we'd be open to the idea. The, the master plan doesn't really allow that area to be full of stormwater management ponds, and everybody's been real clear that's, that's not. But, but in terms of a, a nice entry feature into the subdivision, it could be a real amenity as long as it's, it's really done nicely in the context of the other improvements that were done. Couple of initial sort of piecemeal ideas and concept sketches were submitted the early part of summer. What we had advised, or what we had strongly recommended the developer to do is give us a concept plan for the entire linear park. That's really what the ordinance had, had required and said needed to be part of the development plans. And so, really, those came in for the first time on June 14th. We got comments back to him one calendar week later, so five working days on June 21st. And I think he ended up wrapping in some of those sort of aesthetic features into his plan that got submitted last week. But, like I said, that really wasn't anything mandated. That was sort of an optional piece that the developer thought in terms of getting Section Two going, that that could be a real attractive addition. So, I think he added that in. That wasn't part of the initial. But like I say, the, the preliminary approval was granted the end of, middle of September of last year.
Okay. And lastly, before I turn it over to you, Mr. Moody, there was also the, the accusation that this project has been going on two years and, I guess, misleading the public and other people that it's something that the city is knowing that caused these delays. And we all know if anyone requests a change, whether you wait to the last minute to request a change, it still has a cycle time that you have to go through and respond to. And are you getting a lot of those types of changes or things that's causing this thing to delay? Or was the perception correct? It's been two years and we're not, what is your term you use? Was developer friendly?
Well, to begin with, Mayor, I think if you really want to, you're kinda accusing the developer of somehow distorting the truth. I think if you really wanna find out all the details of why this thing has taken so long, I think the developer needs to be party to this conversation. Y'all mentioned the encroachment letters just went out. Well, like, that, that's a small deal. It was mentioned at the Bydaway meeting that that's actually a big deal. In fact, we had an attorney there that said the developer can't even get title insurance when there's encroachments involved. And it was mentioned that, well, the developer should take care of that. If I were the developer, I wouldn't take care of that. Now, when the city still had title to the property, that should be the city taking care of that. So, those letters, did I hear you correctly saying those letters just went out?
Yes, but...
So, so that's, that's one thing. We got communication a couple of weeks ago from the developer listing the things that needed to be done to, to get to the point of the development agreement, that I hear you say that we're at that point now. So, instead of accusing a developer that's already spent, I think roughly $200,000 of their own money, which in Portsmouth is a little unusual. We're usually the ones writing a check to having something done. The, the developer's spending his own money, Mayor, so instead of accusing him of, of being a liar, and that's, cut to the chase, that's pretty much what you just did, I think we need to sit down with the developer and staff and find out, hopefully, in another opportunity with another developer where we can alleviate some of these problems and hopefully expedite the next development project that we have. So, we avoid these pitfalls. I think that would be taking the positive route instead of accusing a developer of somehow being dishonest, so.
I wanna respond to those.
I, I just wanted to be clear. The development agreement was actually signed back in February, so that's been done.
In February?
Yes, last February.
Okay.
We're in no way inferring that the developer's lying.
No, I didn't say you were, I said the mayor was.
The encroachment piece right now, we have plenty of time. I think the other encroachment piece that you're talking about was from the Bydowee public session, and that was with Halls Creek, and they're very close to the end.
No, I'm talking about the stone operation over by the Craddock property that the developer had mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so we have, we're in a review process, again, of 90 to 120 days. Everybody's moving, and this could end up closing within the next 90 to 120 days.
Good. Paul, I was going to say, now, the plan submission was the big chunk of it that really kicked off the bulk of what is left to be done under the development agreement. Most of that has to do with after the plans are approved. And so I think, as Ms. Warren said, it's a huge positive milestone that there's, both of those, both for the rec center over at the school and for at the new school.
But they were submitted last week after he came up and made the statement that he was waiting on the city and the housing authority. Is that correct? You got this, these plans after that? Yes or no? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I'm aware that there was a schedule that was agreed upon in the closing in July.
The development agreement had a target date of a June 1 closing.
How could you do that? You didn't have all these little things you're just saying you just did.
Because the development agreement was signed in February, planning that all of this would be in place by June to close. Makes sense.
We need to have a review of this and come up with a plan to not have so many stops and starts.
That's what I just said, yeah.
The next one? This is an embarrassment. Take this long to come up with a...
You know, this was kicked off with great fanfare, great enthusiasm with the community at Craddock, and they're still very enthusiastic about it. But what that does, it just, you know, throws water on it when we can't move this thing along. And, you know, there's always both sides of the story. What I'm saying is, we do need to sit down, I think, with the developer and find out how this thing could have been moved along much quickly.
Well, and like I said, we're having monthly meetings, at least monthly, but the first one is tomorrow, to make sure, now that this checklist that we can get going, that everything goes off the checklist.
Sure.
We need to meet every two weeks. We will. But I think I provided a timeline also in December to you all of all the stage of events that got us there, and if you'd like me to provide that again, I'm happy to.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I think it would be helpful.
Can we get, you know, regular updates on where we are?
Sure.
So that when we get these questions and issues, we have some frame of mind. We'll keep coming back to a big assembly. We can possibly work some of this out before we get it down on the table. My other question was, do we move the rec center up in the timeline as far as what portion of the project, where it's done in the project?
That ends up being a 12-month from closing. They have 12 months to get that done. The good thing is, is they have the site plan in for review now, so.
So they could start on the day after closing?
Yes.
All right. We'll talk to them about that.
I was going to say, and you all have made the move in terms of close our funds, money.
No, we got to get the money. I know they put theirs up too.
The city side. They're still waiting on their side. Their side is not up yet, right?
Nothing is in escrow as of yet.
Right. No, no. Right. Yes, ma'am, Mr. Van.
I would just like to make one suggestion, and I think it would help us all. A lot of times, we listen to these proposals on each project, and we set a hypothetical date, time that we want for the initiation to begin and hopefully completion. When we do not meet those deadlines, I think we need to set in process a way that we give feedback to the communities that the projects are going to impact in a timeline fashion. That's where I'm thinking in terms of a chart, so that we can look at where we are moving with these communities, and they will not keep coming back with some of the logistics things that should be in place. We know we can't always meet a specific timeline, but if we are going to be off by anywhere from 60 to 90 days from where we said they could see some action, I think we need to notify them. I think people forearmed gives them satisfaction. We know this is going to take place, but when there's no feedback, I think that's where the problems come in, because then questions arise in the communities. How did this project come on the table when this project over in this community has been on the table for two or three years and we have not completed? And that's where the taxpayers look at it, because it impacts where they are living. And it gives them a timeline to look at. I think it would help us all the way through in bringing about harmony in the city of how certain projects may move ahead of other projects.
Yeah, and to your point, Mr. Van, I think, you know, I, Ms. Warren and Mr. Holt will notice, there's always delays in these projects. They never, they never go exactly, exactly as planned. But I think if we do those regular updates to council and to all the principals, we're just staying informed of what's causing these setbacks, because there are going to be some, and try to minimize them as much as possible. So I think that's what we're all saying.
And I think the $200,000 that the developer needs to bring to the table on the recreation piece, is that closing?
Yes.
Is that correct? So until we get to closing, we don't have that, his piece of the pie?
We have to give to the public.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
I would like to have a, he gave us a checklist. Y'all said that it had been done, and the rest of it was not done. Could you come back and let us know, was he right on one item, 10 items, or no items? Can you do that? Thank you.
And you have had that letter in time enough to go through and evaluate and analyze all of the things that was in his letter? And all of those items that he had?
He's got it right there.
Okay.
You know, counsel, I'll just make a point of clarification. You know, what our goal was this evening is to be able to come back and address what was presented to you from a non-agenda speaker. Keeping in mind that a clear majority of the time for your non-agenda speakers who come up, we have no idea what the subject matter is. We have no preconceived notion what they're going to talk about. And of course, from a staff perspective, we really can't make any accusations. It really falls to us to have to check on it. So I think the key things we wanted to highlight to you is, number one, the correspondence that was held up in front of you, you know, was presented in a way that we may have already had it. We didn't officially have it until two days later. And then I think what Mr. Holt has mentioned is one of the milestones, because the other thing that you heard is that there was a belief, and I like to kind of keep things as cautious as I can, there was a belief that the city might be holding up the project. Well, the largest part of the project is the site plan review. You can't start that review process until that's submitted. That wasn't submitted until last Thursday. So at the time that someone before you saying, you know, I believe I'm being held up, or, you know, that might be the situation, of course, the city hadn't gotten the correspondence till two days later, and then the major portion of site plan that could be a large part of the holdup hadn't been submitted at that point in time. So again, we always want to be respectful for what we hear in the public domain. And I know it seems a little bit painstaking on our part that we just can't answer the question off the cuff, because we haven't even seen it before. You know, the vice mayor walked in and handed us a correspondence, and even, you know, getting a chance to take a look at that correspondence in the dais, it didn't even have a letterhead on it. The top of the page was blank, you know, so even validating right there on the spot what it is. So our goal tonight really wasn't about trying to throw anybody under the bus. The letter that you're talking about, if you see all the red on Mr. Holt's paper, that actually gives you stat by stat in terms of where we are. I mean, if, if you want, we can probably tell you that right now.
I guess my overriding concern is, you know, we've got a developer that did Newport that made a comment to a lot of members of this council, saying they would never do another project in Portsmouth because it was very difficult to do business with. We got a developer at the Craddock site who's a Portsmouth developer, actually, has had problems. I haven't heard him say specifically that. Then we got a comment made about a Portsmouth-educated developer, Amara Hoffler, Dan Hoffler, and some of his partners, that I didn't consider that a serious project, talking about the city center development. I think when you make those comments, Mayor, that those things get out, the developer community is a very close community, and they communicate. So when you make those comments, you know, questioning whether a developer told the truth or not, I don't, I don't think it's in that context. Could be that they didn't do something on time that held it up, but, you know, telling the truth and not getting something done on time are two different things. That's night and day. So I think you have to be very careful in weigh what you're saying when you're talking about people who have the potential to invest millions of dollars in this city. We need more investment, and we need to be fostering good relationships with developers, not, not trying to upset them so they're going to spend their money elsewhere. So, anyway, thank you, Kathy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say, it seemed to me, as I listened, that I don't think you were really challenging the...
No, I wasn't.
But I think you were trying to come to some understanding as to where we had fallen in holding up anything. Was there any relevance to what you were saying? That's what I got when I heard that as well, so. But I think you're on the right track in getting us back on track.
The monthly meetings, I think, is a, is a huge plus, but again, we just want to make sure that, we want to make sure that we are, Mr. Moody had some valid points on what he said about being responsive to not only the developers but to our citizens, and make sure that we don't get into having people making accusations and things of that nature, because we never want a development to get to that level. And we want to keep council and all of the politics out of things like that, because whether we're here or not, the city needs those developments to go forward, and we need to always be mindful of that. And so the monthly meetings are great. I'm glad you've gone through that bullet by bullet. Maybe, Mr. Manager, we can get in our next briefing prior to the meeting, some insights on that, so we don't go through all that now. I am glad to see that you've gone through there and, and annotated exactly where we are, but it, it's, again, we want to keep this in a, in a professional level where people understand that we are open for business here, and we don't want people mischaracterizing the city or any of our agencies in the great work that you guys are doing as well. So, again, anybody else? Mr. Hardick? Okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
I think we need to have that bullet by bullet. Some of us are in personal contact with the developer. You can tell them you're, you know, you're wrong, you're right, or you're right in some cases, maybe you're not. We need to do that. We need to know that. What, all the things he said?
We have a list here that is based on the letter. So we're using this as our checklist with the developer tomorrow to go sure and make sure it's accurate, because as you said, Mr. Moody, everyone has their version of the story, so we want to make sure that we're on the same page together, that this is the correct information.
All right, Ms. Sharon?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Mr. Manager, thank you. You too.
And, counsel, that's all we have.
Okay.
The city council ladies on the floor.
I don't have a laser on the floor, but I have questions about the, about the agenda for the meeting. And it was about some of the changes we're making to the ordinances out in Victory, Victory Village.
Oh, you mean the agenda items?
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Is it okay to do that now?
Go ahead, absolutely. Bring it up.
First one was, you probably, that, Paul, on the 12-02. If I'm reading, I need, make sure you can correct me. If I'm reading this right, this would take the ability from council to approve changes to streets and et cetera in the development? This is my concern, is you put it under minor deviations. So who approves a minor deviation?
Some basic code changes. I was just trying to...
Let me see if I can, let me see if I can restate your question.
You understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, I do.
Because if I'm reading this right, right now, if we brief the development to the council, to the neighborhood, to the community, this is what it's going to look like, this is where the streets are going to be.
Right. Correct.
Right? And if you're going to change these streets and et cetera, you got to come back to council.
That's the way the current ordinance reads. Yes, sir.
Okay. So what's, this change is saying, it doesn't have to come back to council, who approves it if you, if they change the streets and et cetera? If this is approved.
The way that the ordinance, the way that the ordinance was written just for, I'm going to focus for a minute just specifically on the MX EMP district. We only have one of those districts in the city, and that's Victory Village proper. There aren't other of those elsewhere in the city. The way the ordinance was originally written and adopted, as you mentioned, there were a series of minor amendments, which the director of planning could make, and that was limited to various forms of landscaping and very minor changes in, let's say, the type of architectural materials. It was, it was real limited. The way the ordinance was originally written, there were also a series of major amendments, of which included moving any of the streets, any significant change in uses, any, any significant change in the density or open space, as a couple of examples. That's not a definitive exhaustive list. But under those changes, the way that the ordinance was written was that any change in those had to come back through the entire public hearing process for both the Planning Commission and City Council. And so that's really the reason why that both the rezoning and the street closure are on your agenda tonight because of that existing code section. What the developer's request was is because that master plan envisioned the street layout at a conceptual nature, even though the ordinance required the streets to be shown on the master plan, those streets became binding and fixed on the master plan, was that as different land uses like the apartments now have, are wanting to come up out of the ground, and as some of that development comes to fruition, he's finding it may be advantageous in order to accommodate and facilitate that development, to shift the locations of those streets. Obviously, especially from his perspective, if he's got to come back through a three-month process to adjust the location of the streets, it could affect the overall timing of new development coming out of the ground there. So just for the streets, the request was, was to take the ability to adjust those streets based on the master plan, if, if, if the street moves less than 150 feet in any direction, which is half of a city block size, so think of a block size downtown, half of those blocks, then it could be, the request was to have the director of planning administratively be able to approve that. If the streets moved in any direction at a distance of more than 150 feet, or if a street went away entirely, was just plain deleted, or if he found it advantageous to add a new street, then that would come through the Planning Commission through a Type 2 site plan process, which is a public hearing.
Makes sense.
And is advertised. And so the notion was, and again, the basis of the request was, was to find a way to accommodate making some of those adjustments, still within a Type 2 site plan process, still within a, an expedited process to try to bring those developments to site plan process sooner. I hope that answers your question.
It does. It answered my question, it didn't satisfy me, but it answered my question. Because my concern is, and we can do it faster than 90 days, you know, you fast-track stuff, we have done it in many ways. But my, my problem is, you do, if you do a series of these changes to these streets, it could change the, it could change the concept of what was approved by us and what was agreed to by the community. If several streets are changed, it could change the entryway, the whole makeup, and it may not, it may not make, make, make sense or be satisfactory to the people who originally agreed to it. That was my concern. So I want to know at what level of approval this was going through, because we're going to have to answer the questions about, you sold me this six months ago last year, and now you gave me this. And you know the entryway to a, to a community or street change, it can drastically change what you have there. So that, that is my concern. So I'm not ready to, on 12-02, I'm not ready to vote in favor of it right now, because it's not clear to me how it goes from major, a major improvement to a minor improvement. And we don't know what those, maybe you know what they are. But I don't have no clue what he's talking about changing, what streets he's talking about changing.
It's for future actions.
Could be a different...
It's not known.
So he's asking with this, not knowing what he want to do? So it's like a blank check? That bothers me even more. I mean, really.
I read it, and you can comment, I read it as, actually, flipping the script on what we just talked about with the other development, is to keep from having two years of development and cycle. You ask... You're asking for latitude to allow to streamline within certain ranges, so we don't have to go through all of this.
This is too much, this is too much latitude.
You're saying that, well, okay, that's a different argument, too much latitude, but you don't want to chastise them for trying to streamline.
No, no.
We want to make sure that the latitude...
This is totally a point. What they were talking about were major things. So what he's talking about, a street change? It doesn't take 90 days to do that. I surveyed years on the planning commission. You can do that, you can do that in two weeks. If they can present the planning commission today, on the first Tuesday, present to council on the second Tuesday. It doesn't take 90 days.
And again, just sort of the conversation, two things I would mention. Remember, process-wise, again, I think as Mr. Holt had mentioned, this is kind of the only district that you have in the city right now. Remember, with this master development, there was also a piece where the EDA is involved?
Yes.
So again, I just think we need to keep in mind that anything that normally happens, there's that process, and catching the appropriate meeting, then the planning commission, and of course, the city council. The last thing I'll mention, I'll be quiet, is if we think about the development trends that we faced, remember at Victory, we were talking about mixed-use development, but more of the focus was office? And the market has shifted a little bit.
It did.
And I think with the flexibility that you're creating here, you could still continue with office. If there's other opportunities for things like retail as well, as the market can entertain what would happen, you're talking about a process that's a little bit streamlined, again, for the only district like this that you have in the city, to be able to address the market conditions and changes.
Yeah, I get it. But back to Mr. Cherry, I mean, I appreciate your argument on the latitude. What do you think is reasonable about a latitude if what he's proposing, you think you're not comfortable with? I want to get us there.
I think we ought to know. See, right now, these streets and things are gonna be changed, we're not gonna, council is not gonna know, council is not gonna be advised. We're gonna find out when some citizen, probably one of those sitting behind us right now, she's shaking her head, comes up here and says, you told me this last year, and now I got this going on here, and I got a problem with it. So I just think we ought to be informed prior to. If we can figure out how to do that, great. My next question...
Go ahead, no. You want to respond to anything we just said? Before we...
Okay. We're in concert.
It's 12-01. All I want to know on that is, what are we creating, a screen space, a recreation space, or for the closure? Is there a reason behind that for 12-01?
For the street closure? Street closure is designed to allow those apartments to be designed as proposed in the master plan, because right now the street runs right through the middle.
The street runs down the middle of them?
Right.
Okay, I'm good with that.
In order to do the larger layout, they want to vacate that street.
That makes sense, I'm good with that. The other one, I just think we ought to know. We ought to be informed, we ought to know if there's gonna be some major changes to a development like this, because we have enough issues out there in Newport, you know, not to create, really, not to create anymore with the community. And for us to not be informed on something major that maybe happened, several streets being moved or changed, I just want to be informed.
And as I was saying, I think from our perspective, the administration can be helpful in any way. The Newport example, anybody is to know. There's the expectations of the developer who did not have the financial resources to go forward versus the expectations that the community had. And I mean, council was always informed of those. And, you know, really, it will kind of come down to a question in terms of what all would council want to know, and, you know, what might be the best method? Because for the nature of what you're talking about here, for those things that the planning director has the authority, you really are saying, we want to know everything that the planning director has the authority to do.
That's not what I'm saying. And maybe my, maybe my perspective is coming from having sat on planning for eight years and chaired it for four. But I know that when you make these kind of changes and the community at large is not informed, you're gonna hear about it. So I'm talking about the information process here, to make sure everybody knows what's going on, that what we agreed to is not gonna be exactly what we agreed to. That's all I'm saying. And if we can figure out how to accomplish that? I'm happy. But I already see two people back here shaking their head right now about this right here. I'm looking at them right now.
And that, that's fine. Within the only district that you have, and we'll work through this.
Yeah.
But keep in mind, you will sometimes have others who have more time to read a whole lot more of the information in the public domain that's there than even council members may have.
Yeah.
There will be times where you will have the information, and it will be there for you to be aware of, and you will still have somebody in the general public who will have had more time to read it. So again, we just need to make sure that y'all are comfortable in being able to acknowledge when you've received certain information, so going forward, you can really kind of nail it down.
Well, I read it, and that's why my questions came up, because I did read it, and I read it with my, from my experiences. Based on my experiences, that's what I'm telling you. So...
I recommend report that I...
Yeah. What, what impact will it have if we defer this? I mean, it's no sense of urgency tonight, is it?
Well, I know that, well, the developer's actually here, but this wasn't objective in terms of trying to, I guess the question becomes, and this is council's decision, we respect that.
What do you want to know?
Pulling it for how long, and what is it that you need to know in the time that you're pulling it? If you pull it for 90 days, is it just this? I'm just asking.
No, we don't need to...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm saying, just listen to me, Vice Mayor, please. Helps. Just saying, for whatever time that you do want to pull it, and I don't know what that time is, forget the 90 days, what is it that council desires would take place in that time?
A process that can bring it back to council in some way to get their concurrence.
All right? If the process was that anything relative to this district, because it's the only one in the city, that comes at the planning director's level, that we will send an email to council notifying you what that change is, is that sufficient?
That's what I thought I heard Councilman Cherry request, was just the communication of what change is gonna occur here. I don't want to do anything to, I'd rather, as long as we do due diligence to expedite projects, obviously I...
I'm waiting, because we're getting ready to talk out of both sides of our mouth now. We just said we're holding one developer up, now he's trying to streamline to help one, now you want to kill it. That's right.
I hear you do that.
And you're tiptoeing around it, sir. I'm waiting.
I'm for, let's try to expedite, work with them, but also I agree with Councilman Cherry, just give us a heads up on what kind of change you're talking about.
A notification of that matter, maybe that's what you asked for.
That's all I'm asking for.
That's exactly it.
That's all I'm asking for, because the picture's gonna change. I know what the new picture looks like.
Yeah.
Because, because, because I ain't gonna call his name, but he gonna be asking us tomorrow, not tonight, what the new picture is. And we need to know that. And just to have it done without us having any input, because we might get that picture, and we might decide we don't like that picture.
Sure.
Then we don't have to wait till Tuesday night of meeting to suspend, because it's not, what we're doing, what I'm doing now, I know it's not totally fair to these guys, because I didn't give them heads up, or I did give them sort of heads up, but I didn't give them total heads up on what I was asking, but I told them I had some questions about it, and I didn't have time to go through it.
We can do that without pulling...
We could have done that last week. And if you're telling me that we can do that, you can get us that information on these kind of things, I'll vote, I'll vote to approve this tonight, with the understanding that we're gonna get the changes later in the future on these things, and we can have, talk about it before we get to here on the night of voting on them. And move on.
Mr. Manager?
Is that fair enough to you?
If y'all are comfortable with what the... Any modifications you want to...
Sounds great.
We can do that.
Streamline is the word of the day.
That's what we're talking about.
That's right. And again, we want to communicate it, but...
Streamline, but not blinds.
Right, that's right.
Okay. We can't be blinded by these things and not know what's going on.
That's true.
That's why we're here.
Okay, so we're gonna leave that item, you're gonna send something? We're okay with that. All right, anything else?
Picture.
All right. Which group is going to close?
I pick this.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks again. Good job.
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A to discuss the sale or disposition of publicly owned real property where negotiation and bargaining are involved as per subsection 3, and legal matters requiring the advice of legal counsel as per subsection 7. Subject matter of the meeting will be the unsolicited proposal from APM Terminals to operate the facilities of the Virginia Port Authority. Purpose of the meeting is to permit discussion and negotiating information and strategy.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
I guess before I answer, you know, this has been highly publicized and written numerous times in the Virginian Pilot on what the state is proposing, and I believe it's their contract, actually, we're discussing. I mean, it's been in the public domain, does this, at this point, really need to be in closed session, or are there, maybe, Tim, this is a...
Mr. Moody, knowing what I have to say to city council, I think it's very important that this be in closed session in order to develop our strategy correctly.
Okay.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehurst?